I'd like the allegiance to the life of the United States of America. To the rainbow in which stands. For which you have God. For the soul. Just. For all bodies.
Counselor Grossman. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Boggs. Counselor Daigle. Counselor Whitaker. Counselor Smalley is excused. Mayor Sumner.
Yes. When it comes to the media, anyone wishing to speak at any conference tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into the reporter. Forms are available on the sign-in table in the back of the room. Please print cell phone, Bob, or cell phone during the meeting. Announcement for Zoom attendees. If you're joining tonight's meeting via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entry and no need to identify yourself if the full name is not already attached to the device being used. You will be unable to unmute itself. If you wish to speak, use the raise your hand feature. So use it. Click on the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and click on the image at hand. The purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items. There will be time at the end of the meeting for the citizens to speak about agenda items. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up to the microphone. Jim Hartman.
So it's my great pleasure to do a little primer. You know, going to honor. Salt of the earth. Money Rosa over here. Most valued volunteers. He's an ambassador for the park. He carries dog visits for people with dogs. He treats people. He explains the rules, the regulations. He's just a real treasurer. And Joey, I know you found the park a salvation for you. But really, real salvation for everybody that's involved. The giving, the passion you bring to that project, the health standpoint, and the positive energy that you bring to the people and including other volunteers. It's just so. That's what I know from Beth and I and from the rest of the board. And before it's on as well as other volunteers. That are here. Just let, raise your hand if you've been involved with Tony or friends of Fort Plon in some way or are out there regularly walking or exercising. So all your supporters are here. Supporting you and letting you know, counsel, that we are making fabulous information. Brian's gonna freak you the night a little bit on it, but. Like, um, people are making a difference to people's lives out there for the day. Thank you very much.
Very much, just.
Well, thank you so much for those kind remarks and. I would like to thank the council and. The President Ford Kwon and getting together in this partnership and making it possible for those of us that want to sit. To give back. And that's what we've been doing and. Uh, especially. Now. The highest esteem for that Jim Austin. Who ran around this project from the beginning. Thank you for your wisdom. And accepting your ideas and making this work. It's a great party. It's a community party. I'd love it. Thank you very much.
All right. Hold on just a second. I want to say a little, a few little words about Tony. As a 77-year-old veteran, a retired L.A. PD officer, a former international police advisor, and a longtime volunteer. He continues to live a life of service and has a passion for ongoing volunteer work. Tony lived in Paradise, California when the 2018 campfire destroyed his home. In early 2019, he moved to Southern to be close with his family. While out on a stroll around Fort Plon, he was recruited as a volunteer by President of Friends, Fort Plon, Jim Hartman. On average, Tony volunteered about a thousand hours each year, picking up trash, mowing trails, and removing cotton trees, scotch broom, and berry vines. Donating, donating his own equipment and fuel. He also participated in planting oak savannas out there. In total, he has volunteered about 3,000 hours. He says exercise camaraderie and service to this community were very important motivators. When not volunteering, Tony enjoys reading history and emailing friends daily. Tony's advice: Never forget to have a sense of humor. Anyone can handle the good times. It is what you are and do when the going gets tough that defines you. Tony. Tony would like to give you the service of appreciation. For volunteering nearly 300 hours from 2019 to 2021. Uh, without, sorry. Taking the area down Fort Plon. But thank you so much.
I thank you all my friends. Very well. Thank you.
And I'm here to consent. I'm saying 2022.
I'm making motion for consent agenda. That's good.
My motion and second to approve consent agenda as presented in discussion. And for votes.
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Boggs. Counselor Daigle. Counselor Whitaker. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Diane Harris, City Recorder. The city received two applications. One is from Bruce Connor for the Budget Committee. Another application is from Michael Hogset. Um, that is an application for budget and planning. There are two vacancies on the Planning Commission. Um, we, the term, one term ends actually this year. But the other one ends December 31st, 2022. And there are three vacancies, 2024, excuse me. There are three vacancies on the Budget Committee. One ends at the end of this year. Um, but the other two terms end at the end of December 31st, 2024. So we are asking council to consider Mr. Hogset's application for both budget and planning and Mr. Connors for the Budget Committee, and both gentlemen are here tonight.
Uh, Bruce, would you like to come up?
No. Pretty much. Can I do for you?
Would you like to do anything about your book?
Well, I did. I was at the concert, not really thinking about being on a budget committee. Yeah. Great point. So places back. And uh, was approached to maybe put in an application. There would be some vacancies. And I thought, well, I haven't learned how to retire very well, so maybe I need another sideline. And help on the budget committee.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Michael?
Well. Um, I spent a couple of years on the council of the great, until I moved here after resigning. I'm just retired. Too much time on my hands.
Let me see. We have babies that put you to work. We have things to do that could put you to work.
How I started out.
True story.
Our approach, local government, something that's happening. That's what happened to Jim and Doc.
So welcome.
And where we're from.
The biggest benefit.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Um, I think it's our coffee machine that made this so that I could hardly eat it.
Okay.
And. I don't know what it says. Like, I'm talking about your relevant background.
I'm retired military. Spent 19 years in the Army. I spent about eight years doing um, residential concrete in Las Vegas, and I spent a couple of years building houses in Las Vegas. Um. Other than that, I've been pretty much retired since 2011.
The one that you meet for something.
Well, my mom lives here. I keep getting up in the air, so I kind of came to watch after. You bet.
You were doing a few poets.
That's a good question.
So we have uh. Two people for the committee and legend.
You could do one motion if you would.
I'll make the motion that we accept Mr. Connor and Mr. Thanks, sir.
Hogset.
Budget. And. For the comment. Plan.
All right. Any discussion? So we have a motion and a second to approve budget committee appointments to Bruce Connor and Michael Hackett. Both terms ending December 31st, 2024. And a commission appointment to Michael Hackett, term ending December 31st, 2024, as presented. Any discussion?
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Boggs. Counselor Daigle. Counselor Whitaker. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
Under LT voting delegate.
What we have before us is the annual voting delegate designation for the League of Work in Cities. Conference that will be held on October 5th through the 7th at the River House in Bend. So what we are asking council to do is vote for the, or choose the voting delegate and the alternate delegate. To serve at that meeting.
Your options are limited. You have the weakest points of the council going. Joe Grossman. I mean.
They can do it by Zoom as well.
But uh, I, my suggestion is always elected official. Kerry White told me, asked me to go if he's going to go. For the office of, for the office of Joe, are we not? Only, not me.
You can have backup.
Alternate.
Is there anybody else that's, who else is going to the center?
Uh, three department heads going. I make department heads go at least once in time in their career. And so this year is uh, known, unfortunately, Aaron. Uh, and uh.
Pat.
Pat. Man, Pat's got to go because she's our biggest fundraiser.
So they didn't choose.
Well, I, I included that motion to. Valid. As the voting. Oh.
She's the only one that's not qualified. She's not an official public official. There really should be me. Oh, I'm not kidding.
Oh, no. Give him the pressure.
No, I mean, she's trying to think embarrassed of us. But she's not an official pub, uh, public official, but only that she's not a full, full-fledged department head. I'm sorry.
Yes, it is.
Sorry, Larry.
That's okay.
Thank you for the thought.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have a motion for Joe and.
It'll be him. We've got better to gather.
Or a second?
Yes, there's a second.
Any discussion?
Counselor Grossman. You're the first all night. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Boggs. Counselor Daigle. Counselor Whitaker. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
Resolution 2023.11, Fort Plon, divided, restricted management of self-coverage.
We're trying to be fine. We don't get through. Council has been asked to throw revolution 2023.11. It's authorizing the city to settle on a contract to amend. His current design and construction, it's part of later, it's called that. For Plon. As you guys are aware, the 2020 recreational build programs, 2029 a lot of conservation grants, both of those were. Um, but basically on hold with, pretty much, um, put this whole project on hold. Um, August 18th of 2022, we received the notice to see for those two. Where grants, old grants, which were about a different amount of miles of the area. That will talk along with the season of the 2020 local development grants. That was for the ADA special respirations, appreciated picnic style pavilions and other items. Um, because of the pandemic and uh, material on the supplies and replacement. Um, the whole project is put on hold because of. We've now received some additional funding. And so we asked, and additional funding will cover the RV, overall parking. Um, the purchase and installation of new, including play equipment. Um, and then also. The 2020 land a lot of conservation fund is basically 200 and 500, 750 dollars. Um, we have a commitment from the Oregon Parks Department to amend that to picture grant, 436,000 dollars, which will also direct that in person. Um, look outside. That's the most likely to back to approve revolution 2023.11. Authorizing a contract amendment of construction and rated activities at Ford's common. With the, with the O.
I'll make the motion here too, ready, looking 2023.11. Pretty good. All second though.
And motion and second, any discussion?
Are there any matching funds issued? Maybe there's. Not, not currently, no. Um, and honestly, until we receive the bids, we're not going to know where we're at. What I can say is all the updated information that's been submitted for our application. Is, is currently defined, this can be at their time, but until you get those big stuff, no, you don't know where we'll be.
So. Any further?
That was bad.
So the overall projects.
Yeah.
Right now, with all the Oregon Parks and Rec grants. Um. Potentially, and what Primm and Ford Plon either have received as donations or grants received. We're just in here over 3 million dollars.
3,000,732. I would look at that. Okay, thank.
Any other discussion? All right. Yeah, but.
Counselor Grossman.
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton.
Aye.
Counselor Boggs. Counselor Daigle. Counselor Whitaker. Mayor Sumner. Motion carries.
On the psilocybin.
You guys want me to take this one?
Yes, please.
All right. Good evening, Council, Mayor and Council. Chad Jacobs from the City Attorney's Office. So as you recall, a couple of minutes ago, you passed an ordinance to place a temporary prohibition on psilocybin facilities within the city, a two-year prohibition. And as you may also recall, that prohibition, before it can formally take effect, must be approved by the voters, so it's on the ballot for this November's election. If the voters were to reject the two-year prohibition, the question then becomes, do we want to have time, place, and manner restrictions in place at that point in time? Because in January, the state will begin taking applications for psilocybin licenses. And so part of what we wanted to do is come before you tonight to see if you want to move forward, have staff move forward. With uh, bringing back time, place, and manner restrictions to you this fall. And if so, what you might be interested in doing. Um, as set forth in the staff report, there's lots of various options. The key needs to be that any time, place, and manner restriction needs to be quote-unquote reasonable. That term is not defined by state law, but reasonable just basically, for the most part, needs to be taken into consideration so that it doesn't actually prohibit these. Of facilities from being located in the city. So if you're going to place restrictions um, as far as distance is required, or you know, within a certain distance of, you know, certain types of facilities. Or if you're going to limit it to certain zones, you want to make sure that there is actually space for these services, for these facilities to be located. Um, otherwise, there's various things that different jurisdictions are looking at, including regulating hours of operations. Um, imposing any certain sort of safety restrictions. Uh, imposing restrictions to minimize odors. Uh, imposing restrictions related to preventing uh, views into the interior of public areas or requiring fencing of outdoor spaces to be permitted. Um, really, any ideas that you have, you know, we can certainly look at, but this is a time for the council to, you know, have a discussion to say, do you want to. Have staff spend time this fall working on time, placing manner restrictions to potentially have some of them in place? If, in case the voters turn down the measure, and if so, what are the types of things that you might be interested in having us bring back to you? I'm happy to answer any questions, but this is really a time for you all to have that discussion.
Well, on the first one you, uh, that's listed to think of is. Imposing a requirement to comply with state laws and regulations. What are the state laws and regulations? You said it's, uh, it's pretty broad that they don't really have any. Are there any specific that. They already have to live with?
Yeah, so one is obviously the licenser requirement that you have to have a license. Um, so you know, this would prohibit someone from coming in. Um, and having some sort of psilocybin, you know, facility and locating in the city without a license. Um, certainly the state would hopefully come in and take some action if that were to occur anyways. But this would give us separate, independent authority to take action against someone who didn't have a license. There are some restrictions already in state law for these various facilities. One being for the manufacturers that they have to do all their activities indoors. They're not allowed to have outdoor manufacturing activities. Another is that in the city, um, the service centers may not be located in residential zones. Um, so that's already prohibited. In addition. Um, there's a restriction. I'm just trying to find it's all in the memo here. Uh, there's a restriction that, um, they may not, the service centers may not be located within a thousand feet of a school. However, the state determines that there's a physical or geographic barrier capable of preventing children from traversing to the premises of the psilocybin service center. The limit on the distance requirement is decreased to 500 feet. Um. Licensed premises have to have very defined boundaries. They don't have to be enclosed by a wall under state law or fence or other structure, but we couldn't require that under local law. Um, and then mobile premises are prohibited by state law. Um, but state law does permit co-location of manufacturing and service center facilities. So you could have a, a growth site, a growth site and the service center basically at the same location under state law. So that may be something you want to, would look at prohibiting as well. Um, so really, you know, uh, if you look at the staff memo, it is on the first page, the second paragraph under explanation is where these. Uh, state limitations are outlined. Um, but other than that, there's nothing else in state law that would sort of put time, place, and manner restrictions on the facilities.
Yeah, you said that other cities is also uh, investigating and coming up with a plan. Uh. Would we have any privilege to what they have within the next month?
Everyone's sort of at the exact same stage you are, and that they're just beginning to look at things. You know, part of the reason for that is that. Um, you need to provide notice to the state if you're going to be amending your development code. So if you're going to say that these are limited to certain zones, for example, that would require a process where we notify the state. And go through the planning commission for hearing before bringing it back to the council. So everyone's just at the sort of preliminary phase. The list that's in the staff memo are sort of the things that we gathered from other jurisdictions about what they're looking at at this point. But no one's in fact enacted anything, at least to my knowledge, no one's enacted, enacted anything as of yet.
Would it be appropriate to uh. Have a workshop specifically for this perfect, in the month of October? Or towards the end of September, although I'm not. But uh. Before we. Need to go to uh, November. Looks like the 14th is in November, the council, or the death to the ladies.
So, so two things. One is, it's certainly up to you as, as to whether and how you want to have this discussion. I think part of the, the purpose for having this agenda item tonight was to have some of that discussion here to get some direction. If you want a more in-depth discussion, we can certainly schedule a work session. That's up to you all. Um, the key, there are two key points. One is, is that if we need to put time, place, and manner restrictions in place, we want to have them in effect by the end of the year. Because as of January 2nd, the state will begin accepting applications. So you don't want to wait too long. Um, the other thing is you can begin this work and then in early November, we'll know if the voters approve the prohibition or not. If the voters approve the prohibition, we can put a hold on all this work because that will give us two years to sort of come back and see what other jurisdictions are doing. But in the meantime, it's been the recommendation of our office that you at least begin this work now, just in case the voters do reject it. That way you're prepared to potentially enact something. In December before the state begins taking applications in January.
I guess I'm not sure what other kinds of restrictions we can put on this. I mean, it's a state law and it's going to go into effect. And it already has, according to this memo that you gave us. Uh, certain restrictions. And I don't know what other kind of restrictions that we could. Come up with. Yeah. Or. Wouldn't, that would be, that would fall under the state law.
So if you look at page three of the staff memo, there's various options that are outlined. You know, some of the most common would be regulating hours of operation. Um, so you know, if you don't want a service center operating all night long, you would want to have, you know, limitations on hours of operation. Now, others, as I mentioned, you know, security measures are often a big thing in jurisdictions, especially when you looked at the marijuana facilities in other jurisdictions. Security measures were something that a lot of jurisdictions looked at. And then zoning requirements, you know, are there specific areas within the city where you want these facilities to be located or specific areas where you don't want them to be located? If, if you're, if not, then you certainly don't need to do that, but those are sort of the most common areas that people look at when imposing local regulations.
Okay, well, then I think I have to go along with. Uh, the suggestion that maybe we have a, a separate workshop because I mean, that's, that's a lot of things to look at and we don't even know. Without, without Brian's input, we don't know where we might want, or we might not want something. We would probably do the same thing like we did with our. Marijuana shots that we were going to have. There's only one area that's really open to that type of thing, and this probably falls into about same category. And that's out around the 135.
But if it goes down to 500 feet.
That would be, you say, you got to look at your salary. But to go for a general, overall, where to do. That's the one we, we picked. Way that years ago when marijuana became legal, if you wanted stuff, you know, this is kind of the same process. And here, that is the only thing that's different. Much the marijuana laws have changed, you know, it's been. So just, I, I think you hit on something. When we went to marijuana thing, what we discovered is that there is no commercially zoned land. Uh, where one could locate that wouldn't be within a thousand foot of the school, thousand feet of a school. And so what came out, right? Am I saying that correctly? And so what it came out is, is the.
And so what it came out is, is the furthest away commercial land would be out near exit one thirty-five. That is still within the city limits that could possibly qualify.
But now with the five hundred.
Now with the five hundred, if place and manner restrictions comes in, and that would say, if it was five hundred, they had to have security. But as I understood from Chad, you can actually define what that security is, is that correct?
We would have to make that as part of our. We can make that one of our city.
Can we do that?
Can we do that, Jack?
To, to stop the five hundred foot prohibition?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're preemptive from state law from doing that. But for the five hundred foot prohibition to apply, the state has to make a finding that the, the property is, and the exact language is, there's a physical or geographic barrier capable of preventing children from trav- traversing to the premises of the psilocybin service center. So there's got to be some sort of, you know, barrier that stops them from walking to the service.
Would that be a, a fence with barbed wire on top?
I don't, I don't think that's what they're talking about. I think they're talking about like there's a separation, you know, of, you know, like a, like a highway or something like that that's stopping them from, from walking over there. So I just want to be clear again, tonight's not the idea that you guys need to make any decisions. It's just to say, here's the types of things that we'd like you to explore. You know, we'd like you to explore hours of operation, we'd like you to explore security measures. You know, if you just have that general idea to give staff some feedback, then we can come back to you and work with the planning commission and you all with specific details. You don't need to make decisions tonight, but we just want a guidance, one, to see if you even want us to do this work now. And then two, if so, what are those areas that you're interested in having us explore?
So as I see it, one of the things that we could do is be build the structure with draft ordinance that would address these things we're talking about. What I'd like to suggest is, in lieu of a workshop at this point, for you to put on your thinking caps, identify specific areas of net that you want and send them to Brian. And then Brian will work with Chad at creating an ordinance that we can bring back to you. And said, this is what we heard you say via email, is this it what you thought?
And I believe the county is doing the two-year moratorium as well. Yeah.
Okay, then is there a fine deadline that you want to be done by?
How about the first week of October? How much, is that enough time Chad, or you need more time than that?
It just depends on what you all want to do. If, if you want to do zoning issues, then if we're going to have to amend the development code, we have to get thirty-five days notice to DLCD, have a planning commission hearing and a hearing before the, for the council. So, you know, you, you could squeeze it in there, but you're going to have to have, you know, some tight turnaround on the, on the hearings before the planning commission and the council.
Mayor Summer and councilors, good evening, Tammy Trowbridge, Finance Director. I have put together a staff report based on the use of the ARPA funds so far and then some other items that have come up that needed either match or commitments to be able to proceed, some of them belong to the Ford's Pond grants and we can go through those. And then what, what is left after that? And we're kind of looking for some guidance, make sure you guys are okay with this list. So you'll see the expenditures to date, those first four items, the Central Park event stage, the homeless camp improvements and the monthly expenses, concept drawings for a park bill reroute and the recreation park that was being talked about behind the fire department. And then other small park projects that we tried to finish up with the ARPA funds that we had, including the dog, dog park improvements, the pocket park over here. And there were a couple other, some work over, I think on the fence at the tennis courts. There was just some miscellaneous things that needed help. And then other projected expense to complete projects. So the non-farrel water treatment plant, we're projecting to pave that over there. Obviously, we've got department heads to talk about those items. If you have any questions on the things that are listed, the safe routes to schools, wetlands and design on White Street, that's something that Brian had presented a couple of months ago, I believe. And you guys had approved that you wanted to move forward on that. There was a need to be able to commit to a two hundred thousand dollar in basically a match from city funds because of the cost increases on the Ford's Pond project.
The match we've met a hundred percent for the grant, so this would be a shortfall in cases of the shortfall, which we know will be facing for the boardwalk.
No, the boardwalk is further down. This was, there was all the cost increases with, to all the expenses. The grants were very concerned that just being their own match for things, he's right. And with the Ford's Pond, what they've been able to raise, but that because of cost increases, there still might be a shortfall in the project. And so they wanted us to be able to commit to that. Yeah, but they wanted to be able to have that commitment there. Also, you'll notice out here on Comstock and Central, ODOT has been putting in flashing crosswalk beacon. Those, and there will also be one down here at Mardana. And they also requested, first we had a ten percent match and then the cost of the project increased significantly, correct Brian? Yeah, and so because of a possible shortfall of their funds, they, we needed to be able to earmark ninety-five thousand dollars to finish that. We haven't seen the bill of that yet because that second one is not in, but costs are just going crazy. And then back to the boardwalk, the boardwalk requirement because of the man-made wetlands over there increased the cost of the path significantly. And we're going to need those additional funds to build that. So that leaves about three hundred ninety plus the thirty-one, so four twenty-one. And we have some water infrastructure things that we've been talking about because of compliance issues. And then also the fire department has a request in for a rescue quad, makes great sense. But I'll let those guys talk about their proposals on that. If you'd like to hear more information about the emergency quad that they'd like to have to be able to like, go pick up somebody out there around Ford's Pond in case somebody like has a heart attack on one side. So instead of ta- trying to take an ambulance around that trail, you'll have a quad with that, that can carry someone. Completely outfitted for that kind of thing, like a mini ambulance. And then do you want to talk about your water compliance issue?
Yeah, some of the money that was going to be left over, around four hundred thousand, I thought it was. Tammy and I were looking into going back to an AMR system, meter reading, automatic. We're just in the exploratory phases of that. But we've got some issues up at Cooper Creek with the high manganese and the organics that we're facing late in the season like this, like we are right now. And so we're looking very hard at possibly trying to put a pre-treatment irrigation system in there to help with oxidizing some of that manganese or, and/or those organics to try to make that water more treatable. So Tammy said that she had a little bit of money left. Kind of wanted to grab it and drive it in the mirror right now. Trying to find the information and giving us a preliminary plan on a pre-treatment narration.
If I might add, he, he's not really telling the whole story. But, but I want to take a step back and let you understand that one of the things that we're doing is exactly what the ARPA funds are supposed to be spent for. And that's diversified spreading out of those funds that, with chemicals that touch and benefit all citizens. Some communities are spending a hundred percent of it on homeless or a hundred percent of it on this or that. And, and so I'm really proud of the staff that they were able to put this together. Their argument to me over that, doing this, because I thought, well, we'll just run it through rates, was that, well, this is the one thing that can save people from a rate increase that can generally benefit. But the back step from that, the, the recent extremely dry, consistent seasons have created a different mix of water in Cooper Creek. To the extent that in, even though we haven't exceeded our allotted amount of water, the, the, the water has high manganese and organics in it to such a level that we've not seen before. And so the answer is, just to build an add-on pre-treatment system that will prevent us from having to do water restrictions through continuing drought period of time. And it's just seemed like a good investment of money.
The water levels going down with his, the density, the.
That's not a, a hundred percent accurate, you know, it filled up all the way this year. Yeah, and, and manganese has been a problem there and it, and for years. And Jerry's right, it is kind of getting worse. Our problem is our usage is getting higher, we're growing, we're expanding. So we only have so much water at Cooper Creek. If we could postpone using it until later in the season, it would help us greatly meet our demand, our late season demand. But we can't traditionally treat that water in late August and September because the manganese levels go up and the organics also go up. And so we have to try to use it early. And then we're out of our allotted amount and then, and that's when those curtails would come in. And so we're hoping by doing this, we're buying some time, we're getting to treat that water, save that acre footage for a little bit later in the season and still have it be treatable. Reservoir, okay.
Then wouldn't that relieve non-farrel to be of use at more in the later part?
Not, non-farrel is a creek. So we get a certain amount of gallons per day off of that creek. And so we can't really reserve it or save it.
You can't save it for later on.
You can't, you can't save it for later on, so it's, um. But the, the more we grow, which is good, we, we need a little higher daily demand and, and we are.
So we switch a creek-like apparatus if sometimes a bill doesn't have to be for a creek.
Ahead of the facility, it's a, it's going to aerate that stuff ahead of the treatment, the actual plant. It's a pre-treatment facility and it'll be an irrigation and/or a chemical feed. And we're still working on whatever foundation that's going to be.
Yeah, approved the priority list is shown or approved list with changes per discussion, so.
So, I know that the ARPA funds are for like recovery and I'm wondering for stuff like, it's not very, I wasn't eating, wasn't that for, isn't that somewhere in our line items in the budget previously? Or is that, why, why is it out of our funds?
Well, during this non-farrel upgrades project, the original bid, we're trying, we were trying to keep the money down because we were, it was kind of getting away from us and getting more costly. There, the original bid just had them patching whatever trenches they, they dug and, and just real rudimentary asphalt repairs, not, not any kind of a, a fix. And as they spent time out there and worked and ran up big equipment all over the place and just, just our asphalt just went.
I think like, don't you have money in your budget?
I didn't.
That this money can be used for something other than saving, which is out of our budget, you know, out of these things.
I guess we didn't realize how bad that was going to get, so I did not put money in there and paid that entire project. So there isn't, but I mean, not that we can't do it next year or come up with some. I mean, that's something we could do if, if you guys, you know, if that's your direction, for sure.
And now we had talked about, I know often with the personal events center. And so I know we're getting down to only thirty-one thousand. And we're looking at other things for other money. We went through this whole list and it's like, oh, it's all done. And I'm looking at some of these things thinking, I'm surprised that can be used for other things.
Yeah, yeah, that's specifically brought out for that, but you can, I mean, what I'm saying is, I don't want to argue because you make a very good point. Maybe that's what we ought to do, is save those monies. In terms of the, the possible, and we're still working on the possibility of having some sort of, oh, convention center type thing, that's all built in their urban renewal plan and urban renewal plans have. Have been allotted and will be made available for that and brought to the rural agency for a commitment once something comes about. We're working with multiple partners right now that want to do something. The specificity of that hasn't been laid out because the, the two principal parties are in the middle of completing a major construction project right now before they get back to us.
The other thing that is important to remember about these funds is that they, they need to be obligated by twenty twenty-four and spent by twenty twenty-six. So in thinking about being good stewards of that money and also making sure that you have obligations that are worthwhile, that we're putting it towards something that benefits our entire community. Any, and the other thing that I have found out is in the reporting. Uh, any, and the other thing that I have found out is in the reporting. Of these funds, anything under ten million dollars as a grant. They're they're just, you can consider it all revenue replacement. And just use it, you tell them what you've spent it on, the kind of projects you were using them for and. That's all they've asked. So it was very, uh, if you had capital projects over a very high number. Um, they wanted to know details and you needed to get uh, specific permission for that. But we aren't even anywhere in the realm of that large of a grant, so their oversight is like, you know, just. Revenue replacement is how they're considering it.
Did you mention that time that maybe getting more?
No, I mentioned that with the last uh, bribery that was just released a few months ago. Or a few weeks ago, I imagine we'll probably get another round of some funding. I'm sorry, I can't call it anything but that.
It wouldn't be under this same category, though, it's more specific. You know, they've got their own tags on that.
This is great and I think it's wonderful that we have, but we need to do things that. I think that's great and. So is there any other plans for the thirty one thousand?
Hold on to it.
It's it's uh, kind of like this little, you know. Like Aaron's probably gonna tell me that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars isn't enough for his pre-treatment thing and you know. And so those are the kind of, you know, I'm looking, we're trying to be uh, good stewards. I know it is basically, yes, yes. Have an extra dollar to throw at a project, yeah. Counselor Grousman. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Boggs. Counselor Dagel. Counselor Whitaker. Mayor Sumner, motion carries.
So with the approval of resolution. Um, send the port fond city staff, so we can start working on that new scope of work. Once that is completed, we'll move forward and negotiate his contract with the new scope of work, if you will. I'm hopeful that by the end of December and this January, we can have. On the designs done and hopefully um, March. Go out to bid and then construction complete late fall of twenty twenty three. So there is no current.
Yeah, but before we move straight to homeless, I'm gonna take a moment to recognize a couple of key employees. Uh, I don't know if you know, but our uh, new finance director, even though she's a pain in her neck. Uh, is the best ever and uh, he received statewide. And um, for her budget work and so that's to be commended. Oh, we love each other, we're like family. But uh, Melanie, who has been going to school to learn to become a professional city recorder, has achieved her, what's it called?
Certified municipal.
Certified municipal clerk that uh. She did in uh, three years, like Debbie took fifteen years. It's really good, but I wanted to give them their. Global state lobby has achieved great success. Wayne has done an enormous amount of work up to him, including creating the Oregon. The Umpqua Heart is just now through the five five oh one three three, they move forward, they are getting money there. We are still, we uh, we have a piece of property, they have a piece of property that they uh, are in the process of acquiring. Uh, and at some point, we will be transitioning into a regional service center. But I wanted Wayne to come up and give you an update on the totality of uh, our work in uh. Uh, on the homeless agenda here in Southernland and Debussy Town. Right, that's why I said the Umpqua Heart Agency is essentially, we're gonna. We're in the middle of doing this digital plan that we'll be working through. That is going to be the link for the other cities and agencies to come on board. And so uh, he'll he'll explain that, but it'll all be done.
All right. Well, um, first of all, hello, uh, this mayor, city council, city manager, directors, chiefs. And uh, all Sutherland citizens here at home. Um, my name is Wayne Ellsworth, um, I'm reporting for you today as a volunteer of Umpqua Heart. And um, who I'm the president of now. And it's very important to say that um, Sutherland is creating a very good model to address homelessness. And uh, many people are looking to us, and this is very, very exciting. So, I'm just starting out, I've helped coordinate uh, the Hastings Village Initiative since November twenty second of twenty twenty one. Uh, when it was moved uh, to the seven eight seven Hastings address. Where we started out with six individuals, quickly it became twelve, then fourteen, then twenty four. And uh, now it stands at twenty six Sutherland citizens. And we have had as many people there as thirty five uh, seeking help. Uh, we know uh, that they are Sutherland citizens by cross-referencing with local supportive services in Sutherland PD. Originally, the leadership team that consists of myself. The city manager, assistant city manager, city public works director, Sutherland Police Department. And uh, community engagement officer. Determined that we'd be able to have sufficient services for fourteen people. I failed at knowing the need in Sutherland because it exceeded that amount at a very fa- fast pace. With new information, we have just learned that even some families. With school-aged children are now looking to find refuge in Hastings Village because of pending evictions. And there are um, three school-aged children currently residing in the camp because of family evictions. We've turned away many folks in the attempt to keep the population under thirty. But it seems that the demand is much more than what we anticipated. With not having someone full-time to help develop and coordinate this initiative. We're finding ourselves doing the best uh, with what we have instead of doing the best we can. So here are the facts that I personally believe that the public should know. Um, the village was established just before Thanksgiving in twenty twenty one, that puts us at almost a year. The accomplishments accomplishments that we have seen so far. When it comes to the residents, we've been able to help fifty one Sutherland residents with a place to be. We've also been able to help people who weren't from Sutherland uh. That um, that aren't included actually in that number. Uh, Hastings Village. Complete is completely self-governed with a list of expectations and accountability with those expectations. They have their own council that upholds those rules and creates shores and leadership responsibilities. The property that they reside on is completely maintained by the residents. We've been able to help twenty five residents find appropriate alternatives and appropriate housing. Which consists of uh, two families, one veteran. And the rest being folks who suffer from episodic or chronic homelessness. Forehead access treatment and have been reintroduced to their families, two of them have been sober since January. Five have been introduced to appropriate housing through local landlords, local sobriety housing or other transitional housing. A family of six came to us from the coast and was integrated with their family in Roseburg and is currently living there. Five citizens found themselves in legal situations. We did not allow them to continue residing in Hastings Village and are currently residing in our local county facility. One is receiving help in the Roseburg area because he is beyond our level of service. And four have left on their own accord to find adequate street living, living in other towns. The coordination that we've been able to help out with, um, we started an extension of Connecting Point. That was started by local partners and the Douglas County's Local Public Safety Coordinating Council. Adapt Integrated Health has offered uh, six hundred and seventy six showers and a hundred and fifty six loads of laundry. Helped five people obtain OHP and is currently helping with many of the primary care mental health case management, peer support, substance use therapy needs. Uh, they're currently helping two individuals with obtaining their disability. HIV Alliance has put out ninety three naloxone kits into the community which contains three doses apiece. They've done eighty HIV hep C and syphilis tests. Um, and one of those doses personally I know reversed an overdose. So um, they are currently helping some residents coordinate the recovery treatment with hepatitis C. And they've also put over a hundred fentanyl test strips into the environment. I believe this to be a positive because the amount of overdoses from fentanyl that we have seen in surrounding cities. Uncle Health Alliance has helped eighteen residents obtain phones. Many residents obtained transportation, primary care and case management needs. They've also been helping one resident obtain SSI and SSD. And then we have one person that they're working to establish long-term care. Um, because. The his needs are way beyond the capability of the village's scope. Worksource Douglas uh, vet program and Easter seals have helped out with access to veteran employment options. Douglas Public Health Network has helped out with harm reduction and public health information. Volunteers from the Catholic Church, Saint Vincent de Paul, Sutherland Food Pantry, Family Church, Seventh Day Adventist Church. And Church of the God of Prophecy have been helping with clothes, food, showers, peer support, transportation and many other things. And then Love Thy Neighbor Project with their Loads of Love Initiative and Bernie from the local laundromat. Has helped them receive laundry services, so they've provided. A hundred and thirty nine people with about one thousand one hundred and fifty five loads laundry over there. Uh, many local citizens have been stopping by and showing their support with many um, means of donations and services. Uncle Heart, coordinating these supportive services have been able to offer access to fifteen IDs. Twelve determination of SNAP benefits, two eye exams, many applications for housing um, and housing assistance. One dental appointment with led to extractions and brand-new teeth. Three social circuit security assessments. Over two thousand dollars in fine reimbursements thanks to Sutherland's Work Crew Initiative and much more. The reason we're able to do these things in an efficient, coordinated and trauma-informed way that has consistency. Is because we have a place where people can be. And that are engaged in ways to create self-sufficiency to aid in transition. We're the only place in the county that has this and it's working. But we do have downfalls. So some hardships. Sutherland Police Department has responded to sixty calls. Top calls being disorderly conduct, harassment and assault, trespass, public assist and mental health. Mental health is a lot uh, when it comes to uh, adapt crisis coming out there and helping out. There was um, warrants arrests, we're also on that list, but they. Most of them are gonna be officer-initiated going out there and upholding warrants. Sutherland Fire Department has responded to nineteen calls total, thirteen EMS-related, two lift assists. Three dispatch canceled en route and one gas leak. And the gas leak was just blow off from the gas thing that was out there, so that wasn't a thing. Um, there have been, um, there was one instance where a villager assaulted another villager with a baseball bat. But that was definitely taken care of. Behavioral complaints, there have been complaints of villagers yelling obscenities at each other. And there has been one overdose reversal out there. There has been calls to adapt crisis to evaluate villagers' mental health state to see if they're a threat to themselves or others. But none that they have found a threat. Um, sanitation and health. Um, there have been an influx of citizens bringing a lot of donations that tend to accumulate. That make the area look less than appropriate. This makes the small dumpster work harder than it can. Uh, leftover food, uh, they attract flies and animals who also partake in outside living arrangements. Excessive products create clutter. If there was a person there during the day, they can mitigate this. Having only two toilets for around thirty people. Make a situation where coordinating appropriate pump and dump times hard because of availability. The villagers are cleaning them regularly to help in this process. There is a need for nutritious meals that promote healthy living. Currently, healthy meals are offered on Mondays and Wednesdays at the Catholic Church with the leftovers being delivered directly to the village. Local volunteers bringing an occasional meal for everyone. Um, the biggest resource that can ensure proper sanitation is having clean and accessible water. Currently, the neighbor is supplying water to the village. He has expressed that the water bill is a lot more than anticipated. Um, we need proper resources to deliver proper sanitation. Transportation continues to be a factor at helping our residents obtain proper services to promote transition. Uh, the transportation department has been contacted and asked to develop a bus stop at this location. They did say no, uh, because the current bus ends at Taylor Street, which is a half mile away. But without transportation, proper transportation, self-sufficiency will always be a struggle. So the last thing, where Umpqua Heart is at, so we have a direction. With the help of the city of Sutherland, we were able to establish a five oh one C three that can take donations and develop this initiative. We're currently working with Jensen Strategies and Sequoia Consulting to develop a strategic plan, a scope. Development, policy, budget and employment structure to develop and sustain a regional initiative. That will be able to offer housing equality, access, response and transition to those experiencing as episodic or chronic homelessness. This will be done through an urban camping model. Like what we have in Sutherland, a micro shelter village that offers peer support, case management, work crew for fine reimbursement. And job-related resources or SSI SSD for self-sufficiency. And then the development of a tiny home village to help create permanent supportive housing or home ownership. We currently have an accepted offer on fifteen acres on Diamond Lake Boulevard in Roseburg to develop this. We have grant applications out to Senator Wyden and Senator Mercury's office. Uncle Health Alliance and the Oregon Coalition on Housing and Homelessness. We have a meeting with Representative Goodwin on the twenty eighth to help write a bill for four million. Thanks to the United Way, we've been able to complete phase two of the Sutherland Initiative. With the development of replacing a majority of the tents with car parts that the car ports. That look better and the development of two micro shelters to aid in transition. And uh, we've been in contact with Douglas County Cow Creek Habitat for Humanity for potential funding and development. And we currently have close to twenty letters of support. From the majority of the supportive services um, to support this initiative. We have a commitment. From a local Roseburg church to build the majority of the structures, commitments from local contractors to help develop. Our goal is to have a majority of the due diligence and fundraising towards this property. Done by the end of the year, so we can concentrate on the development of that property. We'll be looking to hire a director by the end of October to focus on the development of the Roseburg Initiative. And uh, to keep on bringing. Um, does anybody have any questions? Because that's a lot of work and a lot of words. I told Jerry I needed fifteen minutes, I think I made it.
A lot of money and a lot of hours put forth for thirty six or forty people.
Volunteer hours. So just so you know, when it comes to what they're doing with the work-related programs. They've been um, putting in a lot of hours around the city, doing a lot of the um, weed eating and and uh. And mowing lawns and stuff and taking care of that property, so they are putting back in the community just to pay off some of their fines. So we do have some other folks that are doing that and we also have people that are working on. The developmental part of their journey to be able to become self-sufficient to add to the community. But without these kind of initiatives, they would never have. But without these kind of initiatives, they would never have a chance.
I was just thinking how many hours and how much money is being spent here in Sutherland. And then when you take the whole state of Oregon, let's say, and the homeless people there, man, that's a huge, huge.
Yeah, the only thing I could say to that is when you go north and south, there's billions worth of B of dollars that are going into homelessness. What we're doing here is completely community. I mean, the the City of Sutherland is absolutely pushing forward with this, and they're looking, I mean, people are looking to Sutherland because we believe that we have a really good model with Uncle Heart and working with the city to be able to develop something that is totally community minded. And with the the kind of response that we've been getting from the community, it is just an enlightening situation because I've been doing this for six years in Roseburg, and I haven't got the commitments like I do here. It's absolutely wonderful, we're watching people change every day. It is, it's wonderful.
Will this facility stay open even when you build up there?
So I can't, I can't answer to that.
No.
So we are looking, we are looking into what the law states when it comes to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, and we will be writing our ordinances appropriately.
I want to thank you again for all that you're doing out there. Really is appreciated by lots of people. Um, are you still having an issue with people dropping off garbage type stuff there? Yeah.
So.
So, you know, really need to figure that out.
So how to answer that question is garbage to somebody is not garbage to somebody else, and we were talking about this before. I collect a lot of crap. Rummage sales, you know, my wife is a rummage sailor, it drives me crazy, but I have a job there, I have a garage that I can store a majority of that stuff. They believe they need that stuff for some period, and and it's collected. In my mind, yeah, there's a lot of clutter and there's a lot of garbage in my mind. But for somebody else, that's not not necessarily the case. Um, like I said in my report, if there was somebody that would be able to spend more time during the day, they'd be able to mitigate that little bit better. We did make it where my number, my personal cell phone is out there where people can call, and we do have building companies that would like to drop off a lot of their non used uh goods to be able to build these micro shelters. I don't have a place to put that yet. But there are people calling me and I'm turning them away because we don't have the spot or the place to put that stuff. But other people will just bring in trucks and they'll unload it, and it will end up out there. So yes, there are situations where there's undesirable waste that makes it out there.
Would a sign out there help? Tell people not to drop stuff off like that?
There is one. That was the first thing, Erin. Yes, so, yeah, it's one of those things, you know, it's like I if I could be out there more, but I have a job, you know, from eight to five every day. So I can't be out there during the day unfortunately.
Just saying, our goal in this whole process was to raise enough money so he can quit and become the new executive director of Uncle Heart and play a more meaningful and consistent role here to grow this model. We do believe the model can work by having people constrained to temporary housing, but giving them often that if they want to get help and move up, there's that uh progression. And uh we're we're discovering that that is indeed worth, and I'm going to carry that out on the weekend or sooner. We're just in the process of raising and doing our best to raise as much money as we possibly can up to and including completing the strategic plan. We know that the county has told me, I met with them last week. Uh, the uh tribe has told us and other citizens have told us, if we can see that strategic plan and you have something in front of us, uh we can help fund it. So that's what we're working on.
Just as, just so you guys know, I don't know how many people rent in here. But I just talked to somebody today that um has been homeless on the streets for the last twelve years, in and out, um and he's very excited to get his one bedroom apartment finally, that's going to cost him twelve hundred dollars a month. You know, that's, that's just what it is, you know, nowadays, they've got a bunch of uh different um apartment complexes going up in the Roseburg area on that Diamond Lake corridor there. And um some of them will be subsidized, a majority of them will not. So it's mixed income. And you're looking anywhere from a one bedroom from eight hundred dollars to twelve hundred dollars a month, so it's very hard for, I mean, just thinking of myself as the little punk kid that I was or still am, whatever you want to say. Um, I would never be able to afford that, you know, working at, you know, says like I used to do back in the day, there was no way that I could afford those things, so. For, so finding like this tiny home village initiative is really where our focus is, is really just to create this model where we can create housing that people can actually afford, something around three hundred to four hundred dollars a month.
That's where an old motel would, I think, come in good because you can charge, you know, four hundred dollars and another five hundred, just at least give them, you know, on the studio.
Yeah. So Peace at Home, uh which is another act advocacy group, um used to be uh Badass Persons Advocacy, they were able to uh apply for project turnkey dollars, which they were able to purchase a motel to be able to help them with that initiative. There are those dollars out there to help in those things, you just got to wait for the the timing, as Pat would tell you. You just got to wait for the dollars to become available and having that waiting game sometimes is really hard.
Can I take a couple of minutes just to, to what you know what we're looking for, funding for this and uh, because I think you should know, it's it's taking some time. Uh, the senators have already been mentioned, that's really one of the first uh things we've found was that the our senators have uh federal discretionary funding that was restored this year. And we're waiting to hear the outcome of that, we hope to hear from the end of the year. We're not sure what that will amount to, of course, when you apply for grants, you never know whether you're going to get the grant or not, but uh their offices are working together with us on this project and we're very excited about it, so we're hopeful we'll have some uh outcome there. We're meeting with uh Representative Goodwin, I met with her uh about six weeks ago. Uh, we think she's going to write a a bill that she will gather support for and will help her for four million dollars for this. Uh, the supervisors have indicated they want to have a part in this, as has Cow Creek. Uh, the churches, uh I think probably will provide all of the materials and the labor for the micro shelters, not the tiny homes, because the tiny home project's a different animal. Uh, I kind of had to put all this together the other day because just in a kind of a chance conversation, I I uh was, I'm going to be introduced secondhand at least to Lindsey Snyder, who is one of the most wealthy women in the world, she's the sole owner of In-N-Out. Hamburgers, I don't know. And apparently she's expressed interest in doing something significant in Roseburg. And I said, well, we've got this thing for you. Ucan and United Way, we've already worked with, uh most of these are grant requests. And we really feel uh that there's kind of a growing ground swell behind this. We're, we're, what we're doing here is groundbreaking in in most respects in terms of managing the a place for our homeless people to to move up and move on. Uh, I think you, just the fact that we see everywhere we go camps that are just kind of running amok. Uh, Roseburg, where essentially they're just quite honestly illegally moving the homeless people around, uh which is in violation of federal law, I'm surprised somebody hasn't taken them to task for that, but uh it's just as well, we hope that this will solve that problem. And I think, and we've talked to you before, we we believe that what we're doing can provide a model that can help many, many rural areas, this is not going to be something that can be reproduced in Eugene or Portland, or even Ben. Uh, they have, the nature of their problem is entirely different than ours, but I think this has the promise of providing a regional solution in the rural west. And we're being asked by uh numbers of other cities, what are you doing and how are you doing? So we we really want to push this ahead and see if we can find a solution for a lot of people in our county. And what we have eleven cities that are are going to be enjoying this project too eventually. But we're getting very close to having a product to to share that is intelligible, so that we can go into a meeting and hand out some paperwork and and have a a program that we can click through and answer questions before they're asked and garner support in a meaningful concentrated way, so we're getting very close to that. I just wanted you to know that we are putting some time into this, and I think it's I think it's remarkable what Sutherland is doing, and we should be very proud of what we're attempting to to do here.
Very good.
So strange form of recognition, you say that civil invasions are largely judged by how they treat the the least among you, so maybe we're doing something really good here.
Anything else for me?
Let me take a bath.
Thank you.
He's just waiting.
Go away.
I'd like to comment. Remember, if you have limited, without solutions, make statements that are likely to benefit the groups and if there's a question that can be handled on a one to one basis, we have one outside the meeting.
I would like to recognize she nails on your good nature when you were at the ice cream junking booth and I told the level I personally like the good nature.
Inside of the hot car working back.
And then also for the uh attendees here, I'd like to say we think a dry subject matter a lot of times, and we all get yours. And so you're welcome to come here anytime you want to have a laugh.
Well, I want to, because the council, we are last council meeting for the week of the last meeting on Central, and I just want to thank all the city who helped us, you know, make things happen. I want to thank all the people who came and enjoyed it. We kind of missed it, we haven't really stopped meeting, we're still meeting and planning for next year, so. Anyway, I just want to thank you everybody.
Uncle Doug.
No, no.
Uncle Dylan.
Actually, I'd like to recognize the library community, because you know, they think it's only business of what you have, you know, travel. And I know we sometimes rely on some of these things, but you know, lots of people, they do a lot for the money, and and I think we need to.
It was awesome.
I know a couple people talk to me about parking at the library.
We have parking as well. Well, we're, we're, we're working with that, we've had a a number of occasions where I've had uh octogenarian volunteers had to walk several blocks to volunteer at the library. So we tried to block off of a total of five places where people that are using the library or volunteering at the library might find a place to park so they don't have to walk when it's a hundred degrees. And there were some neighbor neighboring businesses that took exception to that because they thought that the nose in parking positions of the library were their private parking spot, which turns out not to be the case, but uh we'll, we'll, we're ironing that out. I just encourage anybody that had any questions to please talk to me.
It's just one of those things for more information we can give out.
There, there are just three places that have a sign in front of them that say library parking out of seventy parking spots, I think that was excessive.
Well, this is the result of the meeting between the judge and worst known people in the city.
We have not done that. We've been here for two reasons, one, I would die down on vacation, and the second one is I already seen the house.
I'm questioning, did we get a camera up at the court?
Hey, the only thing I have is I thought the uh spaghetti dinner that started formally volunteers put on was outstanding, I heard it was very successful, they ran out of spaghetti. And uh looking forward to the something free for them, and congratulations to one of the guys. One of the volunteers, Brad, all right. Was amazing. Thanks, everybody.
Good night, Chad.